Good evening, we're going to call our meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, July 29th, 2023. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education Monthly Meeting. Please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Alvarez?
Here.
Ms. Belko?
Here.
Ms. Bierman? Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePaine?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano?
Here.
Ms. Rattner?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Kirby?
Here.
Mr. Tavano?
Here.
Okay, you have a call.
Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted July 14th, 2023, at all schools, on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, or bullying; matters protected by attorney-client privilege, including proposed confidential settlement agreements involving student numbers 81597 and 85784, and the superintendent's evaluation. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move into closed session now and should be out around 7:15. Thank you. Okay, good evening. We'll move back into the public session. The next item on our agenda is our approval of minutes. May I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
The public Board of Education meeting minutes for June 21st, 2023. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions? Any comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. The next minutes are the closed session meeting minutes of June 21st, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Obeying for a portion of the conflict.
Okay, Ms. Rattner and Mrs. Fabiano abstain for a portion of the meeting minutes. Okay, our next item on the agenda is our student board members' report. It's the summer, so they're not here. The next item is our committee reports. Are there any committees wishing to report? Katie?
I have three committee reports I'd like to report on this evening. The first one is the committee that I chair, curriculum and co-curricular activities. We held our meeting on Tuesday, July 11th, and we began at 5:45, and we still can't seem to get it in in less than an hour and 45 minutes. But we did have a nice, it's a great meeting because we did have a lot of discussions and things. So the first thing that we talked about were curriculum documents, and what was presented to us was pre-AP 1, which is freshman. It's part of the College Board Honors Program, and just bringing everything up to date with the NJLS standards, the AP standards, and making sure that everything is there for what we needed. So that was a great report by Dr. Rozell. Then we had some other discussion items. We talked about the grade 6 through 8 science textbook, which was presented by Mistrust, and it's, again, that's also aligned with current NJSLS 2020 standards, and there's a lot of hands-on consumable work in there. It is six, it's got a workbook, very interesting piece about how the workbook comes, and it's really sort of a workbook text, and it's something that each year, well, she called it consumable. So each year, each student gets a fresh book. They use it, they write in it. There's a lot of electronic materials available for moving, and then if we should ever have to go back to virtual school, we could easily use those materials to continue our teaching and our method, so it was good. The next one was an AP psychology book. That is, that book is actually dated 2023, so it's a brand-new book, and it's for high school AP students. It aligned, it's aligned, and it's tweaked to the new standards for AP and the things that are going on. There's going to be some updates by AP to this particular course. So this, since this is such a fresh and new book, and it is digital, it will be able to make the updates to the new standards from AP very easily. So the committee who chose this textbook felt that this was a good choice based on all the others. There was also discussion about the high school Option 2 update, and those materials are there. Did they, did they go out?
No, I've been working on it.
Okay, so we're working on getting them out to, for this year. Option 2, there's some logistics in the enrollment process and things that they will, they will be sending out and getting to the teachers and, not the teachers, the parents and the students so that they're aware of it. The committee did ask that the Option 2, that there be some real solid involvement from the parents, and making sure that we, as a district, engage the parents in this so that they know what their, you know, children need to do. So I was very pleased to see what was going on there. We had an extended school year update. There's, they are, it was two, I think, if I'm reading my notes right, 236 students, 46 of them at the high school. This is the first year that we're literally coming directly to the high school for the first time. It's been a logistical change that has made a huge difference in the students that were being bussed back and forth. The high school starts at 8:30. The O'Tree School, which is the lower schools, lower grades, they start at 9:00, and that was able, they were able to do that for the buses, and it was able to be worked out. So that's going very well. The summer programming update is going well, lots of registrations. It's the, they're in what, session three or something, I think, at this point? One of the nice things, just to tie in ESI with the summer programming, Mr. Maralta talked even more about how the summer program and Mr. Accaro as well, they both are working together to, so that the ESI students will also be able to participate in our summer enrichment programs, and they have already done so. Some of the classes have really been done, and I, from personal experience, I can say that they, that they loved it, they wish they could do that every day. They liked, they went to STEM, I think my daughter particularly went to STEM, and they did something with the robots, and she was, you know, thrilled about that. And it was nice to have some other stuff going on. And then there was, we talked about summer, some annual renewal stuff, which is on the agenda with the Finance Committee tonight. And again, watch the, the meeting because it is online, and it was a great meeting, and we had a good time. We do have fun at that meeting. The next report I have for you is the Finance Committee report. I am reporting for the chairperson, Karen Bierman, who's unable to be with us this evening. And so we have the monthly review of the attorney fees, which was $27,736.41. We also reviewed the bill list, which originally included with, an addendum was supplied. So we had $33,502 that we reviewed at the committee meeting. An addendum 1 was $751,712, and then the addendum 2, which we just received in the last day, is $2,669,4919. Those are up for tonight for, for a vote by the full board. Audit update, Ms. Allen provided an update on the audit cycle. The new orders agreement is in place, and anticipation for them to start is in August. Annual contract renewals, we renewed, reviewed, and recommend to the full board for approval the contracts that were submitted. Heartland School Solutions, Developmental Center for Children and Families, Oxford Consulting Services, and board members have that information for them to review for tonight's vote. Budget update, committee anticipates discussion at the August meeting of budgetary goals for the next cycle. Initial thoughts centered on sustaining as much as we can, limiting expansion, early identification of the budgetary gap, and where cuts would be anticipated to work with anticipated revenue. Understanding how short we would be to maintain existing staffing and programming. Ms. Allen provided an update concerning having filed with the county for the anticipation of having the budget vote on the third Tuesday in April. The next committee report I have is the Policy Committee, and the Policy Committee was also held, all of these meetings were held on July 11th, and we reviewed one policy that evening, and it is a new policy that is up tonight for a first read, and it is Policy 2419, the School Threat Assessment Teams. It is a new policy that is being put forth. This was legislation that was signed. We are still waiting for the updates from the New Jersey Department of Education. Once they provide those updates, we'll update this policy, but we have to have this policy in effect by September, based on the legislation. So the legislation comes out, after the legislation comes the policy recommendations. We're putting in language that came to us from Strauss Esme, and so it's up tonight for a first member vote, and committee had a chance to ask questions. And just so I can tell you that, Dr. Lehman explained the policy during the committee, and the policy establishes threat assessment teams, which we've already been doing way ahead of the legislation. So those are my three reports.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Belko on any of those reports?
I do.
Mr. DePaine?
On the high school graduation 5460 policy, I think it's a second read tonight. I don't know if it was discussed before or not. I thought the starting point would be 2025, if I remember. Is that true?
It was always discussed that the graduation requirements would be starting with this graduating year.
With this one. So how will this new version be implemented? How and when? How will, how will the students?
Dr. Higgins at the high school will be implementing it with his guidance team, and they'll be working with those students that are doing graduation.
So will it affect the children that'll be seniors now or juniors now?
Shouldn't affect them because as they're going into it, they probably already have or are slated to have.
They probably have everything they need.
Everything they need.
Right.
The way our curriculum document is, or the graduation document is written in the way the classes and, pardon me for, but it, it's literally, they could have 160 credits by the time they hit their senior year. So it's, you know, most of them are above and beyond. But they have the logistics out already, they're already working on it, they're already doing what they need to do.
Okay. It's just, I had a lot of time this weekend to read it and kept reading it, so I just wanted to make sure how is being implemented, and is it going to be phased in, in different phases to the students?
No, implementa, we vote on stuff, we make the policy, they decide, it's not our purview to, I'm sorry, Ms. Kirby, I don't mean to.
No, go ahead. You're doing great.
We make, you know, we vote on it, we let them handle the details. That's what we're supposed to do. So they're handling the details, and it'll be worked out fine. Parents, if they have any questions, they can reach out to the building principal.
All right, thank you.
If I can make a comment on that, Ms. Belko, that the impact of exercising this right away would be that this graduating class, or any high school class, has until October to change their schedule. So if we put this policy into effect right now, students starting in fall that become aware of it and are just taking a class because of the old requirement will have the flexibility in the month of September to make that change. So that's the benefit of acting quickly on it, is what I believe is the point. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Alvarez?
Has the website been updated?
It's my understanding that we cannot update it until we get second read approval. I will tell you that the science requirements that were incorrectly shared all these years were a requirement of the high school, not a policy board requirement. A letter did go out from Dr. Higgins, I had spoken with him, I sent out a letter to notify all parents that the, the understanding of the science requirement, that extra science requirement, what, is not a requir, it was a requirement of the high school, it is not a requirement as per policy. So anyone who took it, that's fabulous, they're above and beyond, and if they haven't taken it yet and they're currently enrolled for it and they would like to switch out of it, they may. But we cannot update anything until the board has, makes the decision whether or not they will approve it.
Yes, Ms. Rattner?
I just wanted to follow up to that. Should the second read be approved tonight, and this would go into place immediately, will the students who would, I guess, all the high school students, have the opportunity to adjust their classes if desired with their requests, because I'm sure scheduling is going on right now, so I was just wondering.
Yeah, I think that Ms. Bora just brought that up. They have until, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Does anybody else have any questions on that? Okay, Mr. Tavano, you want to do your committee report?
Yes, please. My committee met on July 11th at 8:00 PM. Five items on the agenda. The first item on the agenda was the TV studio broadcast server. As the public, I'm sure, has noticed, the public access channels on the cable have pretty much been blank. We do not broadcast on there at the moment. We had the Monroe Township High School TV studio instructor, Mr. Boris Latic. He provided us with an overview of the TV studio broadcasting equipment needs that he needs in order to keep the public access channel operational. A projected budget range from the necessary equipment is between $35,000 and $40,000. The public access channel is currently dark, but board and township content meetings, events, et cetera, is readily available to the public through web streaming. The committee requested the superintendent, Ms. Chanley, speak with the township regarding financing options if it is determined that the channel is necessary. Second item on the agenda is pavement, paving at Barclay Brook for Township Recreation Department. Again, I said this at the, at the meeting, and I'd like to say it again, this was not an official request from the Recreation, the Township Recreation Department. I do sit on the Recreation Committee, and this was brought to my attention, and it was a question that was asked, and so I felt the need to bring it up in BGNT. Mr. Tavano shared a concern expressed by the table tennis club under the Township Recreation Program. The district allows the group to maintain seat box containers on the site to store their tables. The group rolls the tables across asphalt paving into the building and have expressed concerns regarding the smoothness of the paved surf, smoothness of the paved surface. Administration advised that there are high priority paving needs with the district, and the committee concurred. No further action will be taken on this matter. I also want to explain that a photo was given to us in that general area, and the pavement did not, didn't look like it was in need of paving, and nothing dangerous looked like it could occur there. Third item on the agenda is the office space planning for special services. Administration suggested that the office range house, that the office, which is the range house on the board's golf range property, could potentially be utilized by the special services operations currently housed at the leased Monroe Commons Office Suite. The committee directed administration to explore this option further with the architect of record. We also discussed storing buses at that location as well. Four, ESI, the fourth thing on the agenda, I'm sorry, was the ESIP option for HVAC projects. Administration provided an overview of ESIP program opportunities for board consideration. The committee requested that two certified ESIP firms be scheduled to present an upcoming BGNT meeting. The fifth item on the agenda was the stage sound and lighting professionals. The committee members reviewed and evaluated professional services cost proposal for Reed Sound and Silverback Productions. Administration provided a thorough history of this service in the district over the past 20 years. Based upon high-quality past performances, the committee opts to remain with Reed Sound for 2023, 2024 year. That's it.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Tavano? Okay. Would you like to give your report? Ms. Fabiano?
Excuse me, on Wednesday, July 12th, the Legislative Action and Community Engagement Committee met. We started off the meeting by thanking Senator Greenstein for her efforts in granting the district a million dollars to aid us in repairs for Applegarth School. The committee, along with many members of the community, have been actively reaching out to the Senator and legislators regarding funding for our district. While we know we are in need of much more, we are thankful for every little bit that we can receive. This led to a discussion on starting a letter-writing campaign regarding impact fees and the Fair Funding Task Force. The committee will work together to draft a letter to share at our meeting and with the entire board next month. Next, we talked about the survey results. Mr. Maralta provided the committee with data showing the results for each question. I'll give a quick synopsis, but encourage everyone to please watch the recording of the committee meeting. In short, 671 residents participated in the survey. Mail-in voting was the predominant method of yes votes. Primary reasons for voting no were the overall rejection of the plan and the financial impact, and a majority of the participants wanted to see full-day kindergarten as part of the referendum, but that this did not impact how they voted. To tie in with the discussion of the survey, the committee discussed bringing in New Jersey school boards to do a presentation for the board on engaging key stakeholders in the community and public community engagement. This would be something that, if we decided to do, would come from the board president and Mrs. Chanley, so that's something that we can certainly be up for discussion. And lastly, we discussed writing a resolution for the NJSBA Delegate Assembly so that it can be voted on at the fall assembly meeting.
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Fabiano?
I have a question.
Sure, Mr. Tavano?
At any point, has anyone in your committee received a response from Senator Greenstein about showing her face at this meeting?
No.
No, it wasn't sent from the committee, it was sent from the president.
I'm asking if your committee has received any word from her that she would appear here and answer our questions. Ms. Kirby?
No, no, we have not, I've, no, I've sent several letters with invitations for her to come to committee meetings. When we got the, when we got the information that we were getting the million dollars for the repairs to Applegarth, I sent a letter, and I invited her again to come to possibly the Finance Committee to sit down with us to look at our needs at Applegarth and our other schools and the costs, because part of the frustration that I felt as the board president was, here we are, we've invited her several times to come to our committee meetings to hear our needs, she has not come, and she wrote a resolution for $1 million when, in fact, if she had taken the time to talk to anybody on the board or in the administration, she would have found out that the needs to fix Applegarth were $11.5 million, not $1 million. So to answer your question, no, she has not replied to any invitation that we have sent her, and I will follow up again with her.
So I'd like to just piggyback onto that, something that happened. I was at the council meeting last month, and I spoke as a private citizen and as a concerned taxpayer, and I asked the mayor and the entire council if anyone has gone to Trenton to try and advocate for us to get some more fair, you know, to get our fair share, basically. I had mentioned to the mayor that I was thankful for him, for his fight to get the seniors their tax break. Well-deserved, you know, well-needed, and I thanked him for that, and then I asked him, do you have any plans, does anybody on this council have any plans to head over to Trenton and fight for our children to get the funding they deserve in this district? And I got a blank stare and silence. Not one person would answer the question. I got a blank stare. That was the answer. So I also come to find out that the state is sending over, I believe, $750,000 for us to expand our police department, which of course is always a great thing to have a bigger police department, better for our officers who protect us. And we're also receiving, from what I understand, another three-quarters of a million dollars to build some volleyball courts and pickleball courts at the park, which of course is always a beautiful thing. But when we're struggling here in our district financially, and these, the same state legislators are ignoring our children and our needs in this district, it's appalling. It's disgusting. And although I do appreciate all the work you guys are doing, I'm sure yous are working really hard at it, I don't appreciate us coming up to these microphones and saying that, yeah, I mean, you know, she gave us a million dollars and we appreciate it. No, that's just to shut us up. And I hope that we don't get shut up for just $1 million. This district deserves double digits, high double-digit funding for the amount of students that we educate and the amount of money that we shell out to the state. And I hope that that million dollars isn't just going to buy us our silence. We need to step it up. We need, the letter campaign is awesome, but we do need to get on a bus with our shirts on again, and, and I hope that the council in this town would join us, and everybody else on Facebook and off of Facebook, would get on a bus and spend their time productive and fight for our students and their funding. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, and one thing to say, Mr. Tavano, I think in this whole process, I think that we've learned too, as a Board of Education, part of the process is with the state budget. I didn't realize that legislators could, could enter resolutions into the budget for the governor's approval for specific projects in specific districts. So I think that's something that we have to keep, be made aware, you know, keep abreast of when those, when they're looking for resolutions from the legislators, because we should, that's another time that we should be stepping up our efforts and reaching out to all of our legislators to say, these are the things that we need in our district, and we would hope that you would add that to the state budget.
Well, just to add on to that, I think that Senator Greenstein is well-aware that we need some more funding in this district. So she has had ample opportunity to put that into effect for us. And what did we get? A million dollars after years and years of asking for higher funding. It's a slap in the face, honestly.
Agreed. Ms. Rattner?
Yes, so, Mr. Tavano, similar to you, I actually went to a meeting, I think it was in January, Ms. Bora, I think you were actually there, a town council meeting, and amongst other things I had brought up, you know, hoping for support for the school funding task force, which has, you know, been a repeated issue, you know, since we were at the workshop back in October. And ultimately, I think that's where, you know, we're going to see the biggest thing for our buck, because even if there were these resolutions, you know, it's usually a one-time thing, whereas that would be an annual change. I do wonder, I know, I think it was Mr. Maralta had brought up at our meeting, that the district leadership, I think some of the board leadership amongst some of the administration has been meeting with members of the town administration. I don't know if it might be possible if they reach out, not that, you know, not that this should have to happen, but if they reach out to our legislators, Senator Greenstein or other legislators, because ultimately, you know, she is our direct senator, but there are other legislators in our area as well, to see if maybe they will be willing to come to a collaborative meeting with the town as well as, you know, the administration from the board. Ultimately, you know, Mr. Tavano, I think you're right. I think everybody is aware that we could use additional funding, it's not a secret. But I'm wondering if that process, you know, if, whether it's mayor, town council, someone reaches out to the senator, like, well, we've been meeting with the school district because of our budgetary woes, would you consider coming to one of our collaborative meetings? And that way, they can all, I mean, not that they're not aware, but then they can really see the nitty-gritty of the challenges that we're facing.
Well, but she's been invited here multiple occasions as well.
She's been invited here, and with her lack of response before the, I guess it was the June meeting, I reached out to Mayor Delina, and I said, you know, Mr. Mayor, would you help the Board of Education out because, you know, we see all these pictures all over of every event in Monroe that she attends. It's really unfortunate that she's not replying to our emails that we're sending her, inviting her to our meetings. And he did say he forwarded my message to her, and the response back that I got was, it wasn't about the meeting, it was about, oh, we added this resolution to the budget, you know, and she disregarded, again, the invitation. So I don't know if part of the resolution that got added was because of the constant inviting her and her not wanting to come here. I don't know what, what it was, but you're absolutely right. We have reached out to the town to ask for help in that regards, and I know Mrs. Chanley and the administration has worked on information, if you want to, if you want to explain that.
So we had met with the mayor and some of their administrative staff, and their attorney was also present, and we had conversations, and they said, you know, we understand what's going on, we talked about the failed referendum, we talked about our wants, our needs, and our must-haves, which was part of the conversation and the verbiage and the language that we utilized when we went to the various different communities to share our needs. And, you know, they said, let's see what we can do. I said, fabulous. So what we did was today, a document, a packet, it was an actual packet, with my letter reiterating, thank you again for meeting with us, we're looking forward to someone reaching back out again, once you've had an opportunity to peruse the enclosed information. And within that information was a detailed analysis provided by an estimator of the cost that we needed for our wants, our needs, and must-haves, you know, $11 million with the specifics for Applegarth, and then additionally, we also put in there any of the wants, whatever it might be, and it is packaged. So it was hand-delivered, and we're very hopeful, and we understand with the summer, I don't know their hours or how they work, but we're very hopeful within the next couple weeks, someone will be reaching back out. And I do think what Ms. Rattner said, perhaps when they reach back out, we can say, oh, when we meet, would it be possible for you to invite, you know, Mr. or Ms., whomever, to come and hear directly, you know, what our concerns are? I will let you know that Ms. Allen, and she can elaborate more if she so chooses during her report, has reached out because we think it's, money is money, a million dollars is wonderful, but if a project, if one of the projects is a million seven, and, and, don't quote me, this is just an example, a million seven, and we don't have the seven, what are we allowed to do with a million? So Ms. Allen is inquiring, when will we be receiving, when will we be receiving these funds? What are the ramifications? What are the requirements? What are the ramifications, what are the requirements, what are the, you know, what, what onus is put on how the money is spent? Because it's so important to know that we think it's, we'll take everything, a million dollars is wonderful, but if you need, if the, the one thing that you need in order to do the project is a million seven, a million six, a million five, and we don't have the five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand, what are we doing with the million? So, Ms. Allen and I actually had a, a meeting about this yesterday, to have that conversation, she is awaiting for the state, the county, and, and all of those organizations to get back to us, so we can know exactly what we're doing, and then, of course, we involve Mr. Tagg, absolutely. So, you know, yeah, we're, we're excited to always get money, but a million dollars is, you know, a very small amount i- in comparison to what we need specifically for that building.
Ms. Bora, you had a question?
You kind of stole my thunder, because I was just going to say that, that the money has been given to us specifically for Applegarth School. So, to, in addition to what you just said, because we pick a project, we don't even have a hundred thousand dollars in our budget today for anything extra. We, we have a very balanced, tightly balanced budget. So, we would have to pick a project that is a million dollars or under to use that money in Applegarth. So, we've not heard from Senator Greenstein on any of the funding formula conversations. You've been walled, you know, stonewalled on that. How about we change the conversation? She's given us a million dollars for Applegarth School, we invite her to visit Applegarth School, we send her pictures of Applegarth School and the email, and we tell her the needs of Applegarth School, and ask her, because she has the power, can she do more than a million dollars for Applegarth School? That can be a side conversation to the funding formula change, because she has, one person cannot change the funding formula, she needs a bigger, but this seems like she has the power. So, if she has the power for a million, I'm hoping she has the power for seven million. Fingers crossed, because she sees the school, and she sees the dire, you know, need that we have, and we failed three referendums, so our children are in real need. So, that was one comment, Mrs. Kirby, if we can start to add to the conversation. The second comment was, I watched the video recording of the meeting, and we were, in the, in the letter writing, you know, project, Ms. DePain mentioned that we can collaborate with other towns, and I'm thankful to Ms. Ratner for bringing that up, that not every town has the same problem as us, and it has been discussed by previous boards. I, I've heard them say that collaborating with the wrong town could hurt us. So, we have to be very careful, if they are suffering with the same zero equalization aid because of the funding formula problem, we collaborate with them, otherwise it's better to fight our own, own battles. So, just wanted to add that comment. Thank you.
What, so just going off of, off of that, we ultimately decided that it's best for us to start on our own, let's spear this, and just commenting from what Mr. Tufano said, I definitely don't feel like this is going to, you know, keep us quiet, I feel like if anything, this million dollars kind of lit a spark under, underneath us, like, okay, well, we know this money is there, we can get it somehow, and I don't know that any of us were aware that, you know, she could put into the budget money to come to the school district. So, I feel like this now opens up more avenues and gives us more options to explore going forward, so, leading to the letter-writing campaign and this resolution to NJASBA, I feel like this is kind of just the tip of the iceberg for us. So, hopefully, we can take this and drive it forward to get even more.
Ms. Ratner?
Yep, just one more thing to follow up on, on what Ms. Bora had said about maybe changing, you know, the focus of what we're sending. I can tell you, you know, without naming specific names, what really got me understanding the problems at Applegarth, we're talking to the teachers and talking to the students, and, you know, living on the other side of town, that's not, you know, I'm obviously more educated about this problem just being where I am, but I think that, you know, if we can maybe focus that, the letter-writing campaign, you know, not just on Applegarth, because ultimately, then, you know, you want to make sure everyone has a stake in it, but maybe including that as an option for when people are writing the letters, whether or not teachers or parents of students, even students, are willing to write the letters, like, you know, I was teaching a class, and then all of a sudden, it felt like the ceiling was going to, to cave in. And ultimately, I, I wonder if those things were, it's almost like they really don't have an option, like, it's, it's a safety concern, maybe that will help, I mean, we can only try.
Well, I ju, I just want to be really clear, because this is televised, that there are no safety concerns at Applegarth Elementary School currently. The, the roof is not going to collapse, teachers are not walking around saying they're in fear that the roof is going to collapse near our students. I just want to be really clear, because we had some stuff a couple of year, last year, I think it was, where somebody put out that there was an underground tank, storage tank that was ready to explode, and it sent parents and teachers and administration into a panic, the fire department had to be called, there, you've got to be really careful.
Right, I, I do apologize, I, I had spoken to a teacher who had mentioned just like the leaks, and then the concern that it might happen, but absolutely, yes, it's not unsafe, we just don't want it to, to get to that point, and...
And, and Mr. Tagg updated the BGNT committee with what was the remediation for those leaks on the roof two meetings ago, so that, that is something that has been addressed.
I just wanted to ask through you, Ms. Chandler, you said you got a packet today, and it had wants and needs?
Yeah, I guess, we gave a packet today.
Oh, you gave a packet?
We gave them a packet of, of the district's wants and needs.
That's what needs to go, I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, Middlesex County School Boards Association said, if you want to go to your legislators, you just can't go there in a bus, you know, with signs or anything, which I don't think they would, stand on the steps, and, you know, demand money. You have to go with what you just said now, wants and needs, and show them. So, that's the best thing that you have today, is there, and if, when we do go to legislators with that packet of yours, so this is our wants and needs, how can you help us?
Right, and that was, that was the gist of the meeting, after, after the referendum failed, the administration, Mrs. Chandler, reached out back to the town council and to the mayor's office, and asked for a meeting, and it was a fantastic meeting, they're very open to listening to our needs here, and they asked us to come back with real numbers for the items that we needed. So, I know Mrs. Chandler directed Mr. Tagg to work with the estimator and come up with the list of everything that Mr. Tagg felt was necessary and a need, really, and then there were a lot of wants, I, I guess, that were put on that as well.
Would we be able to see it? Would board members be able to see what you asked for wants and needs?
Um, what I could, can do is attach the confidential, I can upload it, you can see the letter, and you can see...
I'd like to see it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
My pleasure.
So, that way, when I go out, if I'm in the public and people say, what do you want or need, at least we all have some knowledge of what you asked for.
That'd be great, absolutely.
All right, any other questions on this topic? I have a question. Um, going back to the survey results, it seems that a lot of our members, community members, want a full-day kindergarten program, based on the results, are we looking at, at that at all, or developing a task force, or anything in regards to a full-day kindergarten?
So, it's an excellent question, so we actually just, I just had a conversation with Ms. Allen, and I'm waiting for Dr. Lehman to return, and I spoke with Mr. Merolda as well. We are, we already have some numbers, but what we're going to do in the next, not next week, when he returns, the week after, we've already scheduled a meeting, we were going to be having that conversation, that if kindergarten was something that we were going to have the, the, have a conversation about, especially with a survey, or how it would be handled, how do we go about it? So, Ms. Allen was looking into how you go about it, whether it's a survey question that would be a question on a ballot, and also what it looks like. We did have preliminary conversations, because we were able to speak about it with the mayor and the town council, we, it actually did come up in conversation. We already know where some of the needs are, what buildings would need some renovation, what other buildings would be utilized, we started to look at numbers, how we go from part-time to full-time, what that looks like with staffing, so it's, it's already on, it's already on our radar, and we already, we'll be meeting that next week, the week after.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? All right, Ms. Bora, you want to give your committee a thing?
The Personnel Committee met on Monday, July 11th, we reviewed the current openings, sorry, Tuesday, July 11th, we reviewed the current openings in the district, we have fifty-eight vacancies, thirty-one due to resignations, seven due to retirement, four due to transfers, fourteen due to leave, and one has a new position. Since this is the July list, the leave, leave replacements from the previous school year came back on this as a new vacancy. At the time of the meeting, eight positions were already, had candidates selected, and district was actively interviewing for other positions that are on the agenda tonight for approval. Amongst the resignations, the committee would like to note the one from Mr. Jakutut, Assistant Principal of Applegarth in Brookside, who has accepted the position of a principal in another district. We wish him well with his future endeavors. We had eight responses to our exit survey, and the reasons cited were retirement, a move out of state, accepted positions closer to home. The committee then discussed a memorandum of understanding between the Keene University and Monroe Township School District, which was worked on by the Director of HR, Mrs. Christine Christie, and will allow the district employees and family members to avail tuition discounts. This is a very exciting partnership, and this agreement is also on the agenda tonight for board approval. This concludes the committee report for Personnel. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Bora? No, okay, that is the last of our committee reports, the next item on the agenda is our public forum for agenda items only. Anybody wishing to address the board, please come up, you'll have four minutes, you state your name and municipality, and I'd just like to make one statement. At the last Board of Education meeting, somebody had come up to public forum and had said that the clock did not stop during a member of the public's time. I did go back and reviewed the video, and indeed, the time did stop when the administration and myself were speaking, so I just wanted to point that out, because there was some criticism that we were running out the clock in violation of our policy, and we in fact did not do that, and I know I had said that if it did happen, we would check with IT, but it did not happen, and I know our IT gentlemen work very hard to ensure that the clock is manned properly during the public forum. So, with that, if there's anybody wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and municipality.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Forst, and I live in Monroe, and I studied before, I grew up here, my kids grew up here. I now have six grandchildren in Monroe, three out of my five kids have moved back here, and I'm up here because I wasn't satisfied with the answer that I received concerning the change to April. I know this is, I'm not sure if it's an agenda item or not, but now...
It's not an agenda item.
Okay, but if we're getting, we're going to work on getting money from the state, such as from Linda Grant Greenstein, that we got the million dollars, you're going to go with proposals and other things to the state, and I spoke to her extensively about this, and she says nobody's actually brought her a proposal. And that's why, she said she has nothing in writing, that, you know, so moving forward, if you bring something and you give her something in writing, she said she can work with that. But, you know, you talk about going down to the, you know, to the Capitol Building or whatever, and, you know, I've done that myself, I've gone down there and spoken, I've spoken to, gone down to Washington, spoken to Congress about different things, about, you know, funding for childcare and other things. You have to go with an idea, you have to tell them specifically what you need, you can't just say, I want this much money, you've got to need, you've got to give them an idea of why you need it, and what, you know, what you need it for, and why it's important, and that you have already done your due diligence, and like they were talking about line items, that you could propose to the public in November, you know, and see how the public, we feel, I'm very invested in this town, my family is from this town, my kids, my grandkids, I'm very invested. I'm tired of hearing from people, well, you know, my kid's out of that school already, I'm not really concerned about it. I'm tired of hearing that. I'm tired of hearing it. We're, you know, we're trying to nurture our children, we need to start talking about things that are going to make things better, and stop complaining about everything else, and just, just work on it. You know, there's, it's, it's, this referendum, it has gone down how many times, knocked down a school already, it's not safe. You're not going to keep putting a Band-Aid on something and having us keep putting money into it, you know, and I, I mean, I have kids there. And when my daughter was in middle school, one of my friends was working in the cafeteria, and she said they had no hot water, they had to boil everything, they had to boil big pots of water just to wash what they were cooking with, you know, and this is, we're going, this is, I don't know, early 2000s, you know, I mean, I can, I, I'm sure these things have been resolved, but how many times are we going to resolve things? How many times are we going to have to keep going back and fixing things? You know, but I just wanted to say that I did speak to Linda Greenstein, and she said, we just need to bring concrete things on paper, things that, that she can bring back to the Budget Committee to discuss and hash out, you know, not just, we need this amount of money, what's it for? You know, what's, what's the plan? Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you, and just to add a comment to that, Senator Greenstein met with members of this board, the Assistant Superintendent, myself, Mrs. Fabiano, our previous board president, Ms. Arminio, we did go down, and we met with her and gentlemen from the Department of Education. She's fully aware of the issues we had at Applegarth, we discussed the upcoming referendum back then, I have had conversations with her about the needs of our district, and we've invited her several times to come to us.
But that's what she said, she said that she needs things in writing, that she can, because she said she doesn't know all of the things that the ends announced, or whatever.
Perhaps if she accepted our invitation to come to one of our meetings...
But that's what she said, she needs something on paper, she can't go, she, she needs something...
She's been invited by paper.
But I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying, provide her something on paper that she can bring back to the Budget Committee. You could talk and talk and talk all day, but if that's not something she could bring back, she's got to, you get the, get the proposal together, give it to her.
She had our referendum proposal, she had that.
I understand, and, and it fails, so obviously wasn't a good plan.
Well, thank you for your comments. Anybody else wishing to address the board?
Hello, my name is Doug Poy, I live here in Monroe. Everything that I'm going to say is relative to the agenda. Under the Superintendent's Report, under Personnel, you have Home Instruction, and in most cases, it's designated, the reason is designated as Medical or CST, but there were some students where it was designated, the designated reason was Administration. I would just like some clarification as to what that means. Also, under Personnel, Item K, you, there's a lot of people being approved for Summer Enrichment Program. What's the total cost of that program? And is any of that cost covered by the parents, since it is a, a Summer Enrichment Program? Item S, you're approving some teachers to do some kind, something called Exam Grading. I believe that's for this summer, but could you offer some clarification as to what that's all about? You're approving a lot of people based on the newly adopted or approved contract. I think it would be very interesting, and I think you owe it to the public, to make a presentation, not tonight, but to make a presentation about the new contract. Who were, who were the negotiators for the board? What changes did the contract compare to the last contract contain? Were concessions made by the board? Were concessions made by the Teachers Association? And how does the starting salary for this new contract and the top salary, which I believe is Step 11, if I'm not mistaken, how do they compare to last year's contract, as well as how do they compare to surrounding districts where we have to compete with getting teachers to fill the resignation replacements that we have? So, I'm hoping that next month, you will make a presentation containing those items, because I think the public is entitled to them. After all, we pay for the cost of that contract, we, the taxpayers, we pay for it. And state aid, we pay to the state to give the aid to the schools. Federal aid, we pay federal taxes that the federal government then pays, dishes out to the schools. So, essentially, it is the public that almost pays one hundred percent of every dollar coming into this district. I think we're entitled to know some of the details of the new contract. Items X, Y, and Z, there's something called the Freshman Jump Start Program, I don't ever remember that program appearing in the, excuse me, appearing in the past. If that's something new, I'd like some explanation as to what it is, and also, I question, how can we afford it when you say that the budget exceeds our ability? You also have Items BB through BD in the Nine Vote portion of the agenda. What is the function of resource personnel for technology, math, and science? And finally, under Board Action, I was very interested in the pre-AP One course that I think you're going to be approving this evening. Was this course approved by the college entrance exac... Was this course approved by the College Entrance Examination Board? Do other districts, do any other districts offer this course?
Thank you, Mr. Poey.
Thank you.
Ms. Chanley, would you like to-
Yeah, so the, the answers to your questions that I have off the top of my head will be my pleasure to share. Regarding Home Instruction, when there's an administrative placement, I'm not at liberty to get into details because it's about a specific student. Administrative placement may be that a child is remaining on home instruction separate from anything medical. It could be in regards to the ability to function properly in the school district. It could be in regards to being in the process of being possibly tested for whether or not they would make, meet the requirements for an IEP. And that is what it means administrative and is appropriate, as our lawyer could tell you. So that is specific about children, so I cannot give you specific details. That's what administrative placement would mean. That was the one. In regards to testing, the way it works is, we have the end of the school year, and we have final exams. And then we have, and this is only at the high school, and then we have final exam makeup days. Then, we have extenuating circumstances. I just had a meeting today with Dr. Higgins and went over this particular approval. Specifically, and what has happened is, we then schedule depending upon if we're able to accommodate a child. Childs had to leave the state, child had, whatever the extenuating circumstances may be, and they want to come back and they want to take a test for the final exam, because what happens is, final exams that are not completed within the appropriate amount of time get an I. All incompletes automatically become an F. So if we have an opportunity to do that, the teacher would then get paid to grade that appropriately. And they only get paid that amount if they actually show that they went ahead and graded that test. You then asked regarding Summer School. It is my understanding, I cannot give you the exact amount. I don't know whether or not Ms. Allen has that in front of her. She could provide it at a later date if she doesn't. But Summer School, this current year, is being paid for by- Enrichment, I apologize, some school enrichment, is being paid for by the parents. So in the, in the past, we had S for funds, so we were able to do it, no costs to the parents. We currently no longer have that funding, so that is being paid. Regarding a couple of the things that you met, you made comments regarding that would be under the purview of the, of the Board President to answer. I think I answered your questions. Thank you.
Just, you did ask about X, Y, and Z, about the Jump Start Program. And I can tell you that those are federally funded. They're, they're grants, Title I grants that are paying for those programs. I'm not sure exactly what they are. I'm not working with that program, but I, they are federally funded.
Okay. And as far as a presentation to the public on the new contracts, I know that the contract is still being finalized and written while the memorandum of agreement and the contract has been approved by both sides. Once that document is, is finalized and made public, that can be shared with the public. All right, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address the board? Good evening.
Michelle Arminio, 9 Nathaniel Street. I'm going to speak about the public access channel that Mr. Tofano said is dark. Indeed, it is. And when, when public access anything in terms of public participation, public getting information from the board or even the township, when things like that go dark, it runs in the face of our goals to be more transparent. And Ms. Bora, as much as I adore you, you said something that bothered me at the committee meeting, when you said you weren't sure that it was worth it to put, to consider the public access channel, because most people do streaming and other forms. And I don't think that that's entirely accurate. I know a lot of the adults or senior citizens or older folks do look at public access and for information. So I would like you guys to reconsider. And I know Mr. Tofano said it is still under consideration, but please don't dismiss it as something that may be old fashioned or out of touch, because not everybody does all of the more modern streaming and things like that. So please don't let public access to information in this community go dark. Also, and it is, in keeping with that, our, our sign at the high school has been dark, and it's not telling anyone when the meetings are. So I'd like in, under the same category as this, to please consider fixing that if it's necessary. And that has not been working, I think, from, from the last meeting. So these things are important, even if they're important to a few people, concerned citizens in the community. But perhaps more would be able to avail themselves of the information if these things were kept up to date. So I appreciate that and, and thank you.
Thank you. And just one comment on that. I know all of our schools' electronic signs out front do announce the board meetings, so Ms. Chanley, if we could have Mr. Tag look at that. I wasn't aware that the, the high school sign out front wasn't working. And just to clarify, one of the points that was made during the BGNT meeting, it wasn't necessarily that it wasn't that it was old, or it shouldn't be done, or it wasn't worth it. It was more of a discussion of all of the different ways that community members get their information. So a lot of people have gone to FiOS, they've gone to Hulu, they've gone to Yahoo TV, Roku. It was a great discussion of should we add that to our services, or should we fix this server? And I think what the committee had directed back to the administration is to have the conversations with the town, because what I learned at the BGNT meeting, I didn't know, was that our district for years has been taking, has been the one responsible for manning that server and uploading everything for the town and for the school district. And, and they pay half?
They pay half of the service and we pay half.
Right. So, yes, go ahead, Mr. Tofano.
Just to add to what you said, the township pays, paid for half of the service, and we, as a school district, paid for the other half.
Right, through, through the-
We wanted to contact the mayor's office and ask if they would foot the whole bill so that we could all share.
I want to correct that. I think we paid all of it, and your ask was, you pay half? And then I said, why half? Ask them to pay all. But I, I want to, I think, what I remember is $35,000 was an amount.
Yes, we share in the cost of the cable service, for the cable channel.
Okay, but for the server, we pay, okay, sorry. For the server, it's always been us that has paid.
And I don't think this board even was aware up until BGNT that the cable channel was, was dark, nor was-
Well, I was. I am kind of boy to someone's affection.
So, but that is something that we are looking at addressing. Definitely, this board's intention is not to take away any avenues for the public to get information from the district. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Can I just answer one question that Mr. Poey asked?
Sure.
The pre-AP, that class has been taught here in the district for several years already, and it has met all the standards from the AP and the College Board.
Thank you, Katie. Good evening.
Hi, Pradeep Melem, Monroe Township. I have only two questions. One, are you publishing the survey results for the public?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
The survey results of the failed referendum?
The survey results, yes. The survey results are posted on the district face, uh, district website under District Information. There's a title that says District, yes, it's posted.
And any previous mails that we sent, like as a district leadership, you guys sent to Assemblyman or other elected persons in Trenton, like, can we, is there a way, like, you can, you can put them on the, on the, on the website? On our district website, so that whenever we need, like, whenever we start any new campaign, we can refer some points from back there? Instead of every time you draft, instead of like, give us a free room, but we don't write like, abnormally, like tangentially something different, but, but we'll take some points from previous conversations, where we left off and everything, and then we, we can refer those things as a public when we are writing some emails. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the board?
Good evening.
Good evening, Sarah Shama, Monroe Township. Just two questions. So, the campaign writing, I know that there was a letter on the website already, and that's about, I think, for changing the equation, right, for the funding. Is there a way to like blast that out to the community, to let people know to go there? Because I just happened to stumble on it on the website, looking for something else. And I was like, oh, this is here. Great, I'll do this, you know? But I don't know if the community knows to do that. So if we can send it out in some kind of fashion, whether it be email or text message, or, I don't know, whatever, Facebook, whatever, you know, just get it out to the community so that we get more people doing it. I think that would be fantastic, because of course, you know, power in numbers. And if we can do that again for this other letter, that would be great too. And just, again, telling us who to write it to and whatever points we need to address, because I'm happy to send letters all over the place, you know? So if we can do that, that would be amazing. And then the second question was about, you were just talking about the public access and the funding of that and the server. So it's split between us and the town, who pays for it? Like, out of which budget?
For the cable channel, for the service.
Yeah, so the, so the, the town pays for the cable and we pay for the server?
No.
No, okay.
We split the cost of the cable service.
The entire thing. So why do we have to pay for that as a board, from like the student's side? Why can't they pay for it?
Well, that, that was our, that was our, that was our discussion that we had in the BGNT meeting.
Oh, okay. So you're going to bring that back to the town and say, you guys need to start paying for this, this shouldn't come out of our budget, because our kids don't need to pay for that. We could use that money for something else? Fantastic, thank you.
You're welcome. And the letter that is currently on there is a little outdated. I know the committee had talked about rewriting it and updating that prior to a blast going out. But yes, absolutely, once that is updated and we have whatever letters we're going to send out, it will be a blast out to the community through several vehicles. And hopefully, the township as well, because they, they did allow us to send them our messages during the referendum. And they blasted that out to the town email addresses that they have as well. So we will definitely do that. Is there anybody else wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public forum. The next item on the agenda is the Assistant Superintendent's report. Ms. Chanley?
So I know I do not look like Dr. Layman, but I wish him well while he is not here. So we are on season three. I want to thank Ms. Belko, who did provide some information regarding our Summer Enrichment Program and Extended School Year, and I will just hopefully not repeat what she said, but give some more details. So season three of our district summer program is now, is in its third week. This year, our summer program, once again, consists of three divisions. We have Remediation, Enrichment, and Extended School Year Integration. We're very proud this year that we made sure to integrate it so that they was not considered separate from our other programs. In addition to our high school credit completion program and specialized support of the K through 21, age 21 Extended School Year Program, this week, students in grades K through nine are participating in enrichment learning in the areas of computer science, robotics, literacy, culinary arts, fine arts, band, musical theater, and general STEM education. So we're very excited about that, and the kids are actually loving it. Next week, we're excited to officially launch our district's first formal competitive computer science and robotics learning module for elementary and middle school aged children. The Monroe Township School District First LEGO League and key professionals and members from our own community will have a collaboration between the teachers, the administration, all these professionals, and we're very excited. We believe that a journey into this LEGO League will lead our district to many new innovative opportunities for all learners. We look forward to sharing more about this project in the near future. So we are very excited. And Summer School was, I always call it Summer School because I'm, I'm dating myself. But Summer School, when we talk about enrichment and remediation as it's needed, and our Extended School Year for all of our learners, it's very exciting, because when the children want to go, it winds up being a great opportunity to see that children want to be in a school environment in the summer. So on that note, that would be the Assistant Superintendent's report.
And the next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's report. Ms. Chanley?
As many have already heard from various different people, I went to a conference, and it was an excellent conference. The conference was held in Maryland, and I will let you know that I do go to conferences on a regular basis. And I'm very excited about them when I'm able to bring something worthwhile to the district. That being said, this specific one was something that I had not done before, and it's basically not just a conference. It's actually a membership. And as many of you may or may not know, we have various different memberships that are afforded to our principals, our assistant principals, and the superintendents as per statute from the New Jersey State. And it could be anything from the New Jersey Association of Superintendents. It can be a local, it could also be out of the state. This is called the Superintendent Summit District Administration. And what I liked about it was, it gave us an opportunity, gave me an opportunity specifically, to be around superintendents from all over the country. And why that's important is because we always, and although we are very proud to be in New Jersey, because we know we're at the very top five, so that's very exciting. But it also gives us an opportunity to hear what's going on, whether it be, as Mr. Poey pointed out, the conversation about retaining our teachers, what is our salary like, what do we give, what were the, what were the type of raises? So these are conversations with, through the networking that we're able to do. And then specifically, they have sessions that you're able to attend that were very valuable, because AI, artificial intelligence, is a big buzzword. And we know that we want to keep our quality education solid. But what does it mean for districts? What does it mean for children? What does it mean for staff? And it's something that, the more we can make ourselves knowledgeable about it, the more important it is. So that was one of the sessions I attended. Another session, which never gets old, is about literacy. You know, we talk about literacy. I was an English teacher myself, not in this state. But we talk about, we talk about the concept of having literate children. We talk about how technology should be implemented in such a fashion where it should never replace the quality of literature. So those were just two, I'm not going to name them all, of the sessions that I was able to attend. I will tell you that it was a wonderful opportunity. And one of the things I wanted to share to make sure that the, the public is well aware, when I or a principal, because at the time I was a principal, attend these opportunities for professional development, we hope that it will benefit our children and benefit our community. For example, many, many years ago, many years ago, I went to the Student Technology Association Conference. And I went to this conference, it happened to be in Florida, and I said, oh, let me see what this is. What does this mean? I am very proud to sit here now as the superintendent to tell you that we compete in that particular program on a yearly basis at both the middle school and high school level. And I brought that to this district when I was a principal who went to a conference. So I just wanted to share, because you are our taxpayers, and you, as Mr. Poey pointed out, do pay for the things that we spend money on, so therefore you pay for me to attend, even though it's as per state requirement, to go to various different conferences. The value of these conferences, when we go and we seek out information. So it was a very exciting time, so I do want to say thank you for that opportunity. On a next note, I always like to start before I ask for approval, to be excited for those people that are retiring. We currently have five retirements in our district. Conchetta Anzaldi, 15 years as a bus parrot. We know how important the ride to school is. We always say that children are hours from the moment they walk out the door to the moment that they walk back in the door in the afternoon. And we are very fortunate that when we have bus drivers in Paris, as well as our other staff members, who do a great job. And 15 years being a bus parrot is not an easy task. So I, I wish Ms. Anzaldi the best in her new adventure. The other three people I happen to know personally, so we have Mr. Jim, he calls himself Jim Bo, but it's James Bo. And he has been here for 32 years. And I needed to say it like that, because it's really amazing, 32 years. He has been our occupational therapist at Mill Lake and Woodland Elementary School for that time, and I happen to know him, I had an opportunity to work with him for some different reasons, even though I was in the middle school. He is just a nice man. He's truly a gentleman's gentleman. I, I see Ms. Belko, who knows him, shaking her head. He's a great guy. I was a little shocked. I thought he would make it to maybe 39, 40. But I wish him well on his newest flight, and his flight as a Falcon going elsewhere. The next person, who's also an absolutely lovely person, Ms. Boo Calapati. She has been here as a speech teacher at Woodland School for 17 years. Also, a true stout professional, does an exceptional job with our children, and, you know, their gain to move on to bigger and better, exciting things is definitely our loss. And lastly, someone who I grew up with, one of her, one of her actual siblings, is Ms. Prokopia, Ms. Mary Prokopia, who started out at the high school. I did have an opportunity to work with her for a little while at the middle school. She has been 20 years in this district. She's currently a nurse at Woodland. And for that alone, she is a nurse, so let's give her a double round of applause. I wish all of them well. I always use the, I always like to use the expression that they can, or will continue to fly like the falcons that we are, and it is very exciting for them. So I wish them all well. Okay. On that note, we're going to move forward. My first recommendation for a 10-member vote, it is recommended that the board approve the attached Personnel Items A through AI.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any questions for Ms. Chanley? Then, Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under a nine-member vote, it is recommended that the board approve the attached Personnel Items AJ through BV.
Motion. Motion to approve.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Belko, is there a second? Second by Ms. Fabiano, are there any-
Second by Ms. Fabiano, are there any questions? Ms. Ratner?
Just one quick question. For the letter BN, which is Certified Staffer Zero Period, I just wanted to find out, are those some of the additional programs that I know had been mentioned in one of the committees? Or is that, I guess, what is that zero period for?
Zero period. So the zero period for the music program has continued, and does continue in some of the buildings, and that is just approval of the stipend.
Okay, I just, I wasn't sure if it was music, I think there was something with science brought up at one point, and I wasn't sure if that was for that, or if it was for something else.
Yes, and I do believe, so, let me just double check. I'm looking at the names to see. I believe you are corrected, it is for other, well, those are the substitutes. I'd, I'd have to double check, because this is something that comes directly from the Assistant Superintendent's Office, but I do believe that this zero period would be both music and for any other activities that they might need. And I know that in the past, we had, you know, winter of STEM, just for example. So these would be approved based upon whatever function they would need at the time for the zero period. But that was a very good question, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please? Yes. Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, we're cused on letter BM for Mr. Ratner.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under Board Action for a 10-member vote, it is recommended that the board approve the attached Board Action Items A through Q.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Belko, seconded by Ms. Bora. Are there any questions? Can we have a roll call, please? Yes. Ms. Ratner?
I'll have to come first on this one. Yes.
Okay. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ms. Gerby, can I just make a quick clarification? We're just, we're cused on the PD for Mr. Snyder.
Under a nine-member vote for Board Action, it is recommended that the board approve the attached Board Action Items R through X.
Second. Motion by Mr. Tofano, seconded by Ms. Belko, are there any questions? All right, Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please? Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Madam President, that now concludes the Superintendent's Report, and I would like to just wish everyone, until I see you again, a very enjoyable summer, and let's hope for less rain and a little bit more sunshine. Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is the Business Administrator's Report. Ms. Allen?
I just wanted to mention that at the, at the finance meeting, it was brought up, there was a question brought up by a board member about the ability for the, the town to pay our debt, or to be in with them. And as I had mentioned, we had reached out, you'd asked this question before, back in January, so we had reached out to our bond council, and they had explained that that's not a possibility for us, that is a possibility if you're a Type 1 school district, which is a different situation, or if it was perhaps something that the school and the municipality were, like, building together, like, for purpose together, which really isn't the situation that we have. So because of that, we, we cannot take advantage of that opportunity.
Thank you for looking that up.
Sure. Okay. So with that, I would say the Board Items A through K be approved by consent roll call under a 10-member vote.
Motion.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Tofano, seconded by Ms. Belko. Are there any questions? Ms. Ratner?
Yep, just one. I noticed on the bill list, there were two charges to Ramsina Holdings that were the same exact cost, I was, wasn't sure what those were.
Yeah, so that would be, that should be our rent, so it would be for the month, because it's two different months covered in this bill list, it would be for, we have to pay for June and July, so that's why.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, we're cused on, on letter B, the bill list, for NJSAA Legal Defense Fund, and the addendum to the bill list for Mr. Snyder and Mr. Rubin.
Okay. Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes, abstain on B, the bill list, for check number 55960.
Okay. Motion passes. And, let's see, the Board Action Item L, under the nine-member vote, be approved?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Bora, seconded by Mr. Tofano, are there any questions? All right, then we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
And Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes, and that concludes my report. Okay. Ms. Allen?
The next item is the Board President's Report. As you know, the state budget, the state budget included a million dollars specifically for the repairs at Applegarth School. While this is very fortunate, we've already discussed how it's not enough to cover the total cost for the repairs. Again, I've invited Senator Greenstein to come meet with the Finance Committee to discuss the issues we have with the lack of the funding from the state. She's yet to reply to my invitation, I will follow up again with her office. It's that time of year again for the board to set its goals. I'm asking for all board committees to list on their agenda for August a discussion of board goals for their committee. We will discuss them all at the August meeting, and then we could vote to accept them. Tonight, we have our Superintendent's Evaluation Conference during our second closed session. Just to let the public know, the evaluation was completed by non-conflicted board members back in April and May, and we went through the process of reviewing it and preparing a final version that was delivered to Mrs. Chanley by June 30th. This week marks the one-year anniversary when the board voted to hire Mrs. Chanley as the permanent superintendent. I want to say congratulations, and thank you for a wonderful first year as our superintendent. This year, the district has seen many positive changes, including a continued review of the organization chart, and changes in addition to positions supported by the board. Many staffing changes that have occurred reduced costs in salaries and benefits, as we saw jobs dissolved as staff retired or left, and the responsibilities given to existing staff, that while they received an increase in pay for their added responsibilities, it eliminated a whole position with benefits. We are starting this coming year with a newly created position of an Athletic Director and Supervisor of PE, Health, and Fine Arts. These positions were the result of Mrs. Chanley's innovative thinking to restructure areas in a way to allow for those areas to excel. There are many positive changes that have been brought forth since last July, and I want to thank this board and the administration, especially Mrs. Chanley, for the continued collaboration that only makes our district continue to move forward in the best interest of all students. And that concludes my report. The next item on the agenda is other board business. Is there anybody that has any business? Ms. Belko?
Yeah, I just have two of the folks that are retiring that I just want to mention. I had personal experience working with Mr. James Bo, Jimbo, which he affectionately allowed the children to call him for, you know, for many years. Incredible, consummate, professional, tall man, who can be very intimidating to these young children, because he did work in elementary school, but they, they never exhibited any fear of that man. He, and he did his job with, with the utmost, and he was respected and loved by so many in this district over the years, and he's helped so many of us with our children, and as they grow and as they learn and stuff. So I congratulate him, 30 some odd years, you said, that's amazing, give him a lot of credit, and I wish him well in his endeavors in retirement, and I'm a little jealous he's retiring, good for him. I hope he enjoys every moment of it. And then I also just want to make a mention to Ms. Maria Prokopia, as a substitute nurse in this district for many years, when my children were much younger, I were, had the pleasure of working with her, and always professional, always amazing, taught me some things. She was here at the high school, and I got to say, coming to the high school as a young mom back then frightened me, just to see what went on in the nurse's office at a high school. Very different than, because I did spend a lot of time in the elementary schools, not as much up here, but always, you know, a pleasure to work with her, and I wish her well as well in her retirement and on everything, and, you know, want to thank. I just want to make one comment about the comment from, from the public about the, the information given by politicians, trying to keep it general. I just want people to remember, politicians are going to tell you what they want, what they think you want to hear, so be cautious with what you hear from them, because they're just trying to, to make you happy, and, you know, we have presented all those things that were mentioned to us that we should. Doesn't mean we should stop, doesn't mean we should give up, but perhaps, as suggested, we should go out and, and, and really pound the pavement of a lot of the other politicians in the state. And we all learned a real valuable lesson with this million dollars. But here's my, my other comment is, is shame on her, because all of these years, she knew she could do that, and she could have done it before she did it this year, and we didn't know it, but as a politician, she absolutely knew it, it's been her career to be the senator in this state. Thank you.
Ms. Ratner?
Um, yeah, so first of all, just to sort of follow up on what Ms. Belko said, I know that it has been brought up both tonight, I think Mr. Tofano brought up, and then I think we brought up in our committee about the idea of having a bus similar to what was done a few years back. I forget which month it was, we had looked at the budget hearing calendar and realized that the hearing for the education committees for the purpose of the budget takes place much earlier than you might realize, so I don't know if that's something maybe we can add to our agenda to start planning, because ultimately, if we want to go next March, April, we have to think about that now. So just to sort of, you know, get that strength in numbers. Along with that, I had the, I had seen that there was a webinar through NJSPA today, which unfortunately, I had been traveling, was unable to attend, but it was on legislative updates and the state budget recap. I do believe if you register, you're still able to watch the recordings of these if you can't attend live. There has been some value, I've felt, to attending these live, because there have been legislators where, I forget which, it was one or two of them, where ultimately, we were able to ask those questions, you know, not necessarily to our local legislators, but just to sort of get a better idea of that process, and, you know, ultimately, sort of like Ms. Belko said, they might just be saying the things we want to hear. I remember there was one time, there was a controversy between our legislators and then the person who was representing the teachers, but ultimately, at least it gives us that communication between there. And then just the last thing that is, I, I do subscribe to the Daily Digest, I forget what it's called, from NJSPA. There was actually a really interesting article today, where it was about just like teachers, it's called "The One Question You Shouldn't Wait Until an Exit Interview to Ask Teachers," and I was like, I wonder what that is, so I opened it, and, you know, basically it says that there's going to be teachers who are going to resign because of, you know, taking family leave, that's what I did, right, or, you know, they want a new opportunity, but that for those who are leaving and transitioning into lateral roles, the question is, what could I have started, stopped, or continued doing to better support you here? And the article sort of goes into, don't wait until that person is leaving to sort of ask those questions, and I definitely think we have that communication, you know, with our staff, but I also then thought of how it could extend to some of these families, which maybe take advantage of some of the charter schools. You know, when we look at our bill list, there's like a $40,000 monthly payment to HAKTIFVA, and ultimately, these parents and students have the right to make that choice, but I wonder if there's, you know, something that we can do to say, well, what is it that you're looking for that we're not providing, and ultimately realizing, if we cannot provide it, then that's their right, but just to see both, you know, staff-wise, but then just extending it to students as well, if there's a way, because ultimately, you know, that is a very costly thing when we send students out of districts. So I sort of just wanted to bring up that article, and wish everyone a great rest of the summer.
Bora?
Yeah, I want to go back to June 24th and commend the administration for a brilliantly-run graduation ceremony. This was my first Monroe ceremony, I have had a few nephews and nieces graduate, schools of 200, 250 students, this was a class of almost 600 students. We were so efficient that we were done in two hours, no matter what the weather, and it was such a special day. So it was run very well, and for that efficiency, I wanted to commend the administration. I also wanted to take a minute to address Mrs. Arminio's comment about public access, and explain myself that I would never want to, you know, take away visibility, but I did, my comment was, can we see how many people are still watching us on TV? Because if we can, like Mrs. Gerby already explained, we're not, you know, wrapping up the conversation, we're starting it, but I think one of the data points is good to know how many people are still watching us on Channel 12. What I found out that night was that we show our board meetings and any other special, maybe sport events in, in the school, but the town does a lot of other programming on it. So between, if we could have a collaboration with the town and us, and find out who is watching it before we put $35,000 out there, just from a point of being fiscally responsible, because town meetings are on video, on YouTube, so nobody's complaining that it's gone dark. Our meetings are on our website. We haven't had people complain yet that they cannot see us, so the minute the complaint starts to come, we will be sure to act on it, but I don't want to spend money unless there is really a need for it. So that was my justification, and the last point is professional development. I am a stickler for professional development. We cannot grow, do better, or, you know, improve if we don't do professional development. I do that at work, I do that to be a good board member, and if our staff is not doing it, then we are failing as a board by not forcing professional development. So we, and I'm sure all board members do it, I know personally, every professional development that I approve, I go through it. If it sounds exorbitant, I will send a question asking, is this grant-funded, why are we doing this? Sometimes it's not grant-funded, and we are really shelling out a lot of money, but it is so that we can say certified as a district to provide that service, or education, or skills to our students, for our superintendents and our top administrative staffs. If they do not go to the right PDs often enough, a district of 7,000 students is not going to perform the way it's performing today. So I, I would ask the public to, yes, be, you know, question things, but don't ridicule unnecessarily. We need to do some things, and there is a board of 10 that is approving things before an administrator can go out for PD. If a board of 10 approves something unanimously or by majority, then your representatives[1683.26] then your representatives on this table have approved a PD. And it's good for the school. So before we question professional development, we should really take a deep dive because it's impacting our students. Thank you.
Mr. Payne?
I just have to say that I, this was my first middle school and high school graduation in Monroe, and both of them were run fantastically. In and out, in the middle school, is it Dr. Higgins in the middle school? And Dr. Higgins in the high school. Both, everybody that was involved did a wonderful job with both. And we had four board members, which was very odd, I've never seen before, that had graduating seniors, Mr. Tufano, Ms. Beerman, Ms. Kirby, and Ms. Bora. So it was nice to see them so happy to give their children, because I gave my children their diplomas. And it's, it's a wonderful thing to be able to give your child their diploma and give them a hug and a kiss, embarrass the heck out of them in front of all their students and friends and maybe even yell their name, who knows? But it, it was just very well done and I want to thank everybody that was involved with it.
May I indulge the board with one more statement?
Sure, Ms. Belko.
Okay. So I, I know it was asked before where the referendum results are, and they are on the website. And our website is our website, and I struggled myself to find it. So I want to just give a little tutorial about how to find the survey results on our website. You go to the homepage, now mind you, this is what I do for a living, technical training. Go to the homepage, go down to, on the left-hand side, and look for Board of Education Meeting Presentations. Click on that, look, at first you have to start, excuse me, I skipped a step. The banner in the middle going across, District Information. Then under District Information, third link down, Board of Education Meeting Presentations. When you open that up, you will see on the top is Referendum 2023 Survey Presentations. That's where you'll find it. I struggled for a long time because I'm like, okay, it's there. Let me just verify it's there. I like to verify when we tell the public that something is there, that it's there, but I do struggle. So if I struggle and I do this for a living, it's certainly worth spending a minute to show you exactly where it's at and it's there. So if you try to find it, tell them, go to the end of the board, towards the end of the board meeting before second public information, and they will learn how to find the board presentations.
No, thank, thank you. And I did check before the meeting that it was up there.
And, and just to make people feel better, I think I am fairly tech savvy and I actually turned to Ms. Fabiano because I was like, where is it? And she showed me, you know, pretty much at the same exact time. So don't feel bad if you couldn't find it. And Ms. Belko, I think it's great that you're able to share exactly how to find it for those people who may not have been able.
This part of the video will get rewinded.
Or we can call Ms. Belko since we're board members and ask her what she just said. For the rest of the, rest of the summer.
Is there any other board business?
Just a quick correction. The next board meeting here says it's August 23rd. There's been a change. And it also says March 23rd.
At the end, yes.
Yeah, it also says March 23rd on the agenda, so just, so the public doesn't get confused.
Great, thank you. Is there any other business? Yep, seeing that, we'll go to the next item on our agenda, which is public forum. Is anybody wishing to come up and address the board? State your name and municipality and you have four minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. Linda Pizaski in Rossmore. I crossed off my survey results because my, my fellow resident showed me exactly where it was. I looked at 6:30 and I couldn't find it. So between my neighbor there and Mrs. Belko, thank you very much. I do have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. On the board website, we have a very nice little thing that says Board of Education Election. Basically, come apply, which is great. However, there's a grammar error, which I've pointed out to Mr. Marada a couple of times. Singular and plural don't agree in the argument, in this, in the statement. And it doesn't indicate that now the July 31st filing date, I believe, is no longer valid since we're having board election in April. So I think that needs to be corrected, please. Thank you. Second issue is, I spoke very, very appreciatively with, with Ms. Allen a couple of weeks ago. I had asked a question, I was writing an article for the Rossmore News about the changes that were happening with the board, the last board meeting, and with the budget process being changed to a public vote in April. One of the quest, one of the statements that I had read in an earlier version of NJ SA 20, whatever it is, indicated that it used to be a five-year period where that, where the public vote process was the process. And I, then I read that it was amended so it could be changed to a shorter period. So I called Ms., I called Nancy, actually, Mrs. Tagliano-Farrow, because Ms. Allen was on vacation, good for you. And she returned the call the next day, which I appreciated. And she was not certain how to answer my question, which was that at what future budget may the board, if it opts to do so, change back to board approval of the budget? She was going to direct the question back to Mr. Gagliardi, who had commented on it at the last meeting, but I didn't take good notes on it. I've not heard back as to what year would be the earliest that we could in theory come back to a board-approved budget. 25, 20, 24, 25, 20, 24, 25 is going to be the April voting period. We could in theory come back to 25, 26, back in-house, if I'm understanding the regulations correctly. So if you could clarify for me, sir? Because I'm sure that the people in my senior community are going to want to know the answer.
It could be moved back with a board resolution similar to the one that we passed in June.
Right.
It would only be able to be done with a board resolution.
No, 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 I understand that part, Mrs. Kirby. My question is, what would be the earliest year budget that we could move back in-house if we opted to do so?
It would be the following year if the board, so.
So it would be the 25, 26?
Yes.
Potentially? Okay, thank you. I appreciate the answer. My other two questions are short. I haven't watched a BGT in a few months, so I'm behind the times. But I haven't heard anything other than, now tonight finding out what the answers were to the survey. What's the status on our proposed future referendums? And what are we doing about the Applegate Roof? And those are the ends of my questions. Thank you.
So regarding the roof, money has been allocated in the budget for the design of the roof. That is in this year's budget and Mr. Take is moving forward with that, with the appropriate designers, engineers, architects, and so forth. So that's the first step.
Okay.
And as far as a referendum, do you, there's none proposed at this current time?
Okay, because the earliest we would be able to propose a new referendum would be, if I'm understanding correctly, November of next year? Is that correct? Since we missed the, the November for this year, what would be the next earliest referendum that we could propose?
Well, first, the administration would have to bring to the board a recommendation for a referendum. That is not, there is no discussions happening currently with the administration for a referendum. So depending on when the administration would make the recommendation to the board, then you would have a timeline set from there. If you want to add anything to that, Mr. Gagliardi?
Yeah, so you're not limited to, you know, April and November dates with a referendum like that. There are four dates established by statute beyond the date of the board election.
Right.
And so the fourth Tuesday in January, the second Tuesday in March, the fourth Tuesday in September, the second Tuesday in December. So there are many opportunities throughout the course of a calendar year when you could have a referendum. So if you are concerned, well, we're missing April, then we got to wait till November, we're missing that. Many dates on the calendar are available by law.
Right, I read, I read the regulation on it. I just, but at this point, we are nowhere with a new proposed referendum for discussion in the township. Okay, that was my question. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the board?
Shell Arminio, 9 Nathaniel Street. I would just like to correct the record. People have been inquiring about the, the cable not being up. It was mentioned once in one of the council meetings. A member of the public came up and mentioned it, that the cable station was not working. And I have heard it from other people. So it, it's not that just because you haven't heard it, that it doesn't exist as a priority for others. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, Ms. Bora, I think what she meant was the Board of Education has not, I have not received anything. I don't know if the administration has, but as board members, we, we did not know.
Okay, but also just to clarify that it is a subject matter that has been discussed at the Township Council. And, you know, sometimes all of the information doesn't necessarily get here. But it doesn't, you know, it's not, it's not just coming to the board. It's going in the community. So it has been noticed, one of the reasons why I brought it up, and it was mentioned specifically. So the record on the Township Council, I don't know if it was last month or the month prior, but if someone from the public did mention it. So it is in the interest of the community to put it up there. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to address the board? Good evening.
Good evening. Radheep Malam, Monroe Township. So in April, we are going to vote on 2024 and 25 budget. Am I right? If we are fixing Applegate Roof in 24, 25 budget, we need to prepare, we need to finish the analysis and design by the engineers that has allocated the money in this budget. So, but I don't see any discussions in BGNT meeting happen or how we are going to award or calling for RFP process for Applegate Roof yet in BGNT meetings. So I request BGNT Chair and Mr. Take to take it as the highest priority.
Just to comment, so, you know, once the design is done, then we'll bring it back to BGNT, we'll have the conversations. We'll be able to look through an estimator, the financial responsibilities. But it's absolutely, you are 100% correct because we start our preliminary budget rounds as early as September, late September, late September, because we go through a whole process of defense and you're absolutely right. So it, it is definitely on our list.
So to understand, the design work is awarded to some engineers or not yet?
The design? We have not gotten that yet. And I know Mr. Take is also working with the state on rod grants that he's waiting for to see what the state will give us for that project as well.
Okay, but that won't stop with the, the design work, right?
No, the design work is, is being done currently. It's not been completed and presented to the BGNT committee.
So it's being done by some engineers that we, we already granted that work to somebody.
Yes, I believe that was in this year's budget. Then we budgeted, we budgeted last year for this year's budget to include the design work for the roof.
So has the design work started?
Yes.
By whom? But I, I don't see this.
I don't, I don't.
But I don't see this information that we, we have given this work to some engineering company or some particular person in anywhere, like not in BGNT meetings, not in the board meetings.
The Board of Education would have voted to move forward with that design study. We did approve that, yes. We can get you the information on the design study and have Mr. Take send that to you. You're welcome. Is there anybody else wishing to address the board?
Good evening.
Michael Olesky, 50 Mayberry Avenue here in Monroe. Just want to maybe get the record straight here. Talking about a future referendum, yeah, there's no current plan to put together a referendum. Yeah, and also there's really no discussion going on as regards a future referendum. And the reason I ask, because, yeah, I'm just thinking as a resident here, you know, it was built to us, how important it was to deal with the school overcrowding problem. And I just can't imagine how it can just be dropped at this point because that's what it sounds like is happening. And that was my question or comment.
Mrs. Chanley, would you like to?
So we're having conversations as an administrative team about the concept of going out for another referendum. Due to the fact that we've now failed three, and we really felt, and I, I felt very proud and very strong about this referendum with the cost being as minimal as possible and, and affecting so many schools. At this juncture now, we're looking to a couple of different things. Number one, the packet that was delivered to the mayor's office is our opportunity to say, what, if anything, can the township provide to us as far as cost? And where would we align that, those monies to go in addition to the $1 million that we just got from the state? Additionally, we are now looking, as you've heard about option two, and we're looking at scheduling. We've tried to look at scheduling in the past, even something as simplistic as lunches in the middle school. We are now going back to our principles again and having the constant conversation about what can we do that's fiscally responsible at the minimal amount of cost, what it looks like? Because we have great concerns that putting together another referendum, and I, I feel very, very confident that the last referendum that we put forth was an excellent utilization of monetary, of, of money, of the amount of money and keeping it as small amount, although $105 million is a lot of money in comparisons to what we've tried to do in the past. We were getting as much bang for our buck as possible. So we're taking, we are taking a break regarding looking at putting forth a referendum. We want to start having the conversations and looking at what other things we can do. It would be a wonderful thing if the township could step up, not just for the $35,000, which I will be asking them for all of the money, but they can step up. They said, bring it to us. So we went to an estimator and we bring it to them. So it has been brought as of today, all of our costs, and it has been delineated, a must-have for Applegate, you know, somewhere about $11 million, where each million dollars or so forth is needed. And we're hoping that, you know, we can get some relief as far as there. And then we're starting to look at what the high school's going to look like. I know that Dr. Higgins and I have had conversations to, to talk about what it looks like with scheduling because of what our needs are. We are also looking to partner with colleges. We have recently made some more partnerships for dual enrollment. It allows the children to leave the building. Yes, we want our children here, but if we can give the children a fabulous opportunity that many districts do through dual enrollment, where they can have an opportunity to leave the building and then secure another degree, we're also looking at that. So the referendum is currently, nothing is ever off the table, but it is currently not, we are not moving forward in, it will not, let me rephrase. It is not currently the administrator's recommendation to the Board of Education to move forward with another referendum at this time.
Okay, yeah, that's clear. Very good.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the board?
Once again, Doug Poey from Monroe. I did not get an answer to my question about what is the function of the resource personnel for technology, math, and science?
Thank you. So at the middle school, we have two different lead teachers, for lack of a better term, and one of them is a resource personnel person. That individual receives that stipends in the areas of social studies, math, science. And they are responsible for all of the inventory. And they work directly with the administration assistant principal and principal regarding budgeting. It's something as, as tangible as scales for a science class to trade books for an English class. That is the specific responsibilities of that job.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Also, and I realize we may not have anyone here tonight, but the freshman jumpstart program, it was explained that that's provided through some title funding. But once again, I don't know what that program is. And I think the public, as well as myself, would like to know what that is. So, you know, I understand you may not be able to answer it tonight, but hopefully you'll be able to answer it sometime in the near future. I'd like to go back to that pre-AP 1 class. I'd like an explanation as to what is the content or purpose of that particular course?
I don't have the specifics here. If you would like, we can get that information to you.
And the chair of the curriculum committee cannot shed any light on that?
Well, it was discussed at the curriculum committee.
It was discussed. I don't keep detailed notes, but everything is in the committee meeting online. And Dr. Rozell does a fantastic job. She did not give me an info sheet, which normally I get an info sheet from her, but I did not for this particular program because it was just an update to pre-AP class for AP 2, and it's for, it's AP 1, it's freshman. Students take it, it's part of the college boards. They updated things for the standards and reading and getting things too, so that they can be prepared, another higher level piece, to get prepared for the next level of AP classes. Do you have a, a personal knowledge of the class?
Something that I remember from the committee meeting, if I can say. So it is one of the language arts that is, is part of language arts. So now they'll have four language arts. It was done as a pilot program last year just for STEM students. This year, they're opening it up for all the students. So it's a college board-approved class that teaches writing, but not just fictional, all kinds of informational writing.
Which is excellent, which is what, and now, thank you for prompting my memory because now I remember Dr. Rozell speaking about that at length, about how that really prepares the students for any future AP classes, which are heavily rely on writing and writing skills for the students. And this gives them that jumpstart that they need to be able to write in different formats, write in. And they teach them research processes, they teach them a lot of different things. And it's just a step up from what a gen ed student might take or an honor student might take. So it gives them a pre-AP background so that they're more successful in the AP classes.
If I understood you correctly, any freshmen can take this course?
I believe so.
I believe so, but for, for purposes of giving correct information here at the board meeting, since Dr. Lehman is not here and that isn't his role.
Yes.
We can get that information to you after the meeting. When he's back, we, I'm sure we have your email address and we could send that to you.
Okay, the, the reason I'm pursuing this is because my understanding, and I realize my understanding may be wrong, but from something that I had seen on the internet, is that this course would provide students with experiences in non-fictional reading comprehension as well as writing. Is that fairly accurate?
Yeah, it's part of the process. Yeah, it's part of the process of reading for understanding and writing, writing, oh, I'm not reading, and being able to, you know, present your thoughts and your research pieces, yes.
Okay, because I would think that every college-bound student, and Monroe supposedly has more than 80% of our students going on to college, that every college-bound student would benefit from a course of this nature, where they are reading nonfiction text, such as you would encounter in business, in science.
Well, I don't think this course, and I don't.
Katie, let Mr. Poy finish. I'm sorry, it's a public comment, I know.
I just think that that would be very, very beneficial for their preparation, if they are in fact learning how to better read nonfiction textual material, and often that can be provided through a textbook experience, such as whatever science course they're taking their freshman year, whatever social studies course they're taking their freshman year, their sophomore year, their junior year, it doesn't matter, but if there's a particular emphasis on learning to read non-fictional text, not a play, not a story, not a novel, but non-fictional text, and learning to write in that particular medium, it would be extremely beneficial to students, and I would simply encourage our curriculum people to explore that and to encourage every college-bound student to make sure that they have such a course. I thank you for that, and I look forward to any of your responses in the future, and I'm particularly looking forward to your sharing with the public the things that I mentioned in terms of the MTEA contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to address the board? Right, seeing none, we will close the public forum.
Can I say one thing before you close it? I just wanted to thank all of the technicians that are here every night for our Board of Ed meetings, for the committee meetings, they're here very late, some of them, and when the committee meetings are done early, they're probably happy to go home, but I wanted to personally thank them all that are here tonight, and that get our meetings out to the public, so that there's no excuse for anybody to say anything, they can just go on our website, look at our board meetings, look at our committee meetings, and find out the information they're looking for. So I want to thank them for their hard work and time.
Thank you, Gal. The next item on our agenda is our closed session resolution. Be it resolved, that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby goes into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects, superintendent's evaluation. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Motion.
Second. A favor?
Aye.
And this should probably, oh, and we need to, we need to appoint a temporary board secretary. Would anybody want to nominate Katie? All those in favor?
I nominate myself.
All right, it should probably take no longer than an hour to come back out. Thank you. Okay, we're back in our public session. We have the next item on our agenda is public forum for closed session items only. Is there anybody from the public wishing to address the board? Seeing none, I will close the public forum. The next scheduled Board of Education meeting, the date has changed, it will be August 16, 2023. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. A favor? Aye. Thank you, and have a good evening.